Summer Clark called me in to order. Do I stand for the pledge, please? Okay, I can get the motions accepted minutes on March 7.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from the March 7th meeting.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. The motion accept the financial report and payment of the bills.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, Steve, you have a budget amendment?
Yes, I have one budget amendment. Budget amendment number 2011-014. Just to use $189,494 of fund balance to put $131,162 into the pension allocation for Elkhorn Peace and $58,232 of legal and actuarial expenses for the same purpose.
Okay, the motion accept budget amendment 2011-014.
Excuse me, would you read that again? We had an interruption. Would you read that again, please, in the record?
Sure. Budget amendment number 2011-014 is to use $189,494 of fund balance for the purpose of a greater contribution to the Elkhorn Peace Department Pension Plan, $131,162 and $58,232 for related legal and actuarial expenses for the same purpose.
Okay. I have a motion accept budget amendment 2011-014. So move.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, presentation of the comprehensive annual financial report. Gentlemen? How you doing?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Keith Novak. I'm a partner with Clinton Gunderson. We were the auditors for the audit of the June 30, 2010.
Hold the microphone, please.
2010 financial statements for the town. With me tonight is Greg Barra. He was the senior manager who ran the day-to-day operations of the audit. What I'd like to do is just make some general comments about the audit, some things that I'm required to transmit to you, and then also just make a couple of general comments about the statements. First off, we performed our audit in accordance with generally accepted audit standards, which requires us to perform the audit to express an opinion about whether the financial statements that had been prepared by management with their oversight are presented fairly in all material respects in conformity with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. Our audit doesn't leave management or you of your responsibilities. The results of our audit resulted in an unqualified opinion, which is the highest level of opinion that can be given. There are some other documents that are included in your comprehensive annual financial report, such as the transmittal letter from the mayor, some organizational data, and some statistical data. Those are not required to be in the financial statements, however, they are required for a comprehensive annual financial statement. We read the information to make sure that there were no inconsistencies with that information and the audit information that were in the financial statements. We did not discuss any significant accounting or other issues with management prior to our retention as auditors. We came into the audit totally independently. It's our understanding that management did not make any consultations with anyone other than our firm with regard to audit and accounting matters. That's important because that lets you know that they're not out there looking around to see what other people are saying to try to get the best deal from a financial audit standpoint, you know, somebody willing to do something one way versus another. There are certain estimates that are in the financial statements. They are estimates. They're estimates that are determined by management. Our job is to take a look at them to see if they make sense and to see whether they are consistent with practice in the industry. A couple of the items are depreciation of capital assets. We found that the lives and the methodology being used were consistent with what goes on within industry practice. There is an allowance for doubtful accounts, that being receivables which may or may not be collected in the future. The town provides a 100% allowance for all receivables that are over three years old. We find that to be a conservative and a good approach for the town based on their past collection history. There are certain unbilled accounts receivable which have to be determined every year, having to do with water and sewer usage because of the quarterly billing and the way the billings are being done. We looked at the methodology being used to come up with that receivable and found that it was consistent with prior years and it was done on a pro-rata basis. That made sense. Difficulties encountered in performing the audit? We had none. There were some corrected misstatements. We've attached them to the letter which we had sent to you previously. There were also some uncorrected misstatements, those being errors or misstatements that we found that were not large enough to make a difference and to post to the financial statements. And through discussion with management, it was determined not to make those adjustments and just pass on them until next year. We asked for certain representations from management at the end of our audit. We attached a copy of the letter that they signed to the letter that we sent you. Put it in layman's terms, the letter basically says, "We provided you with everything. We didn't hold anything back and we told you the truth about all the questions you asked." We had no disagreements with management when doing the audit. The only other thing that I wanted to bring up, as I mentioned in the comprehensive annual financial statement, is our independent auditor's report, which is on page nine. That is the only thing in the financial statement that is truly mine. Everything else is a representation of management. The comprehensive annual financial statement of the town is submitted to the GFOA every year for consideration for their award for excellence in financial reporting. And once again, last year, for June 30, 2009, you were given that award. The June 30, 2010 statements have also been submitted to GFOA. It's our anticipation that you'll receive that award once again. Within the financial statements, there were no real changes this year, with one exception, and that is the town was required this year to begin recording their liability for other post-employment benefits. And there is a footnote on that. And there is a liability recorded for the town this year for that. And that's something that's going to be ongoing until such time as either everyone who is to get that benefit fully receives the benefit or other changes are made to the plan. That liability was determined through an actuarial evaluation done by an independent third-party actuary utilizing information provided by the town. The one other thing in the financial statements, the budget to actual, you will note that you ended the year with a positive budgetary variance, meaning that you controlled your costs and/or obtained revenues in excess of what you budgeted to end the year in a positive position when in actuality you had budgeted to break the year.
No good.
There are any questions? I'd be more than happy if you had any.
Any questions? No? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you. Okay. We now have a public hearing requested by Dwight Toney, representing the Houses for America. This public hearing is now open.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. I'm here this evening with Lou Schaefer from Frederick Ward Associates, Kathy Ebner from Homes for America, Inc., and Mr. Edwards from Case Edwards, which is the other partner-owner of the properties. I have a booklet I'm going to hand out to you and we'll go ahead through from there.
Okay.
You may remember that the applicants had been before you some time ago and had received a letter of support that allowed them to apply for their financing that they've been able to obtain through a competitive process through the state of Maryland. The project is to, in effect, renovate Chesapeake and Foxridge Apartments, which is at Whitehall Road and Bridgewell Parkway. The booklet I handed to you, the first page, is just an aerial photograph of the two properties, which are side-by-side. One, the front property off of Whitehall Road, is the elderly housing and the back property is the non-age-restricted housing. The second page is just a diagram of what we're trying to do. We're basically requesting that the property be rezoned from R2 to R3. The third page just gives you some detail in terms of acreage and parcel numbers. The fourth page is how we've re-subdivided the property to accommodate what we wish to do. Generally, what they're going to be doing is renovating the properties and adding two buildings. And Kathy will give you some more detail about that. Then there's an add-on plat summary after that is the variance plat, which basically gives you a plat of the lighter colored buildings are the existing buildings and the two darker colored buildings are the two buildings. One is the building to the rear, as you go back from Bridgewell Parkway, will be eight new residential units. The building to the front will be a community center. Currently, the property has 32 dwelling units for the elderly on the front parcel and 66 family dwelling units with an existing office on the back parcels. The proposal, again, is for eight additional family units and a community center. The next page gives you somewhat of a rendering of what the building should look like on the next couple pages as they are renovated. And that pretty well goes through the booklet. Again, the purpose of this public hearing is to seek to have the property zoned from R2, which they are currently zoned, to R3. Your ordinance currently does not allow for multifamily housing on R2 zoning, and that's why we propose for the R3 zoning, so that these properties will no longer be a non-conforming use. There's going to be a substantial investment in these properties. We want to make sure that they comply with the zoning ordinance that will also allow the addition of the two new buildings, the additional residential units and the community center. We posted the property as required by your ordinance. I have copies of the certified mail receipts for notifying the people in the neighborhood. We've gone through your planning commission and we're now here before you tonight to seek to rezone both properties. They were originally two separate tax parcels. They will remain two separate tax parcels. The tax parcel that houses the housing for the elderly has to be kept separate from the tax parcel that houses the rest, the non-age-restricted, because of the financing differences in the two parcels. However, they will be managed, they will be owned and managed by a joint partnership of the two current owners. And so they will be managed as a joint project, even though they're on two separate parcels and have a little bit of differences in terms of who's allowed in and not allowed into the different projects. Should I submit these to Michelle or somebody? This is the evidence that we notified the neighbors? The history of these properties is they've been there since at least the '70s and '80s. And so they were clearly already multifamily housing before you changed your zoning ordinance and basically made them non-conforming uses. We believe that was a mistake. They are located in a natural buffer from the commercial property that is the old Walmart building that is now, as you know, developing in a different way, but a very commercial way. And the single-family residential that's across the street between them and the local school. So it's a natural transition from your commercial to your multifamily, to your single-family, over to the school. It is also an ideal place for that kind of housing because of the fact with the commercial development that you're going to have there now. You're going to have medical offices. You're going to have restaurants. You still have the school close by. So it's a very ideal place to have that kind of housing. And it has done very well over the years. It's been fully occupied and done well in the years since it's been constructed. And by allowing this rezoning, it will allow for them to go forward with the rehab of these buildings, which they're now ready to have done, and to add the new buildings, which will add a community center, which will have some new exciting benefits for the residents out there and also will allow to have an onsite larger office for the management staff there. So I don't know if you have any questions now or I can have Kathy go over a little bit in terms of what her plans are.
All right, thank you. I'm Kathy Ebner with Homes for America. And I'm here, as Dwight said, with Jim Edwards, who's president of the Severn Companies. And I want to thank you for your previous support on this project because it was because of your support that we were able to obtain the funding that we needed to move forward with this. So as you may recall, and Dwight has done a good recap, you know, Severn Companies and Homes for America is partnering together to rehab the existing units and to build eight new units and a community building. It was sort of a vacant parcel of land. There's a grassy piece of land between the two existing properties. Homes for America currently owns Chesapeake Apartments and Severn Companies currently owns Foxridge Apartments. As Dwight indicated, we're going to partner together. And in fact, the Severn Companies will be managing both parcels after rehab is completed. So the rehab that we are doing, we're spending about $5 million to rehab the existing units. And we're doing a lot of energy efficiency type of improvements, energy efficiency appliances will be installed in all the units. We'll put in new windows, new HVACs, brand-new kitchens, brand-new baths in all the units. Most of the units will be replacing the carpeting. On the buildings that require new roofs, we'll put new roofs in. The eight new units will be one-bedroom apartment units. Four of those will be handicapped accessible units. So that's why we want to build the new building, because we want to have some more handicapped accessible units offered for the residents. And in addition to that, as Dwight indicated, we're going to have a community building whereby we will have a property manager office. We'll have a lounge for the residents. We'll have a computer room by which the tenants will have 24-hour access to the Internet and use of the Internet via computers. And also, we will have a big meeting space for the residents. So this, I just want to make clear that this is not a community building that can be rented out and parties will, you know, happen here. This is a community building that we will be bringing in services for the residents, and the services will be implemented in the meeting space of this building. So, you know, we hope that you agree that this is a great improvement and this will be, you know, a wonderful addition for both the communities. We are actively working towards a finance closing for late summer, early fall, which would mean construction start of September, if all goes well. And we're looking at about a year's worth of construction. So we should be complete and done next fall of 2012.
Dwight, any questions?
You did just finish a job in Perryville?
We did.
Okay. How'd it go for you?
Actually, very well. And in fact, we're having a dedication ceremony for that property Monday, next Monday, the 21st at 11:00 a.m. And I cordially invite all of you to attend because I think that you'll be impressed with what you see. In fact, the community building that we built at Concord Apartments will be very similar to what we'll be doing here in this community. And we'll have some units open, unit for inspection, so you can see the types of, it's very similar, the types of improvements that we made.
So the layout's basically the same as what we have up here? Same?
Correct. Minor modifications.
Now, doing your renovations, the current residents there, do you have something set up for moving them about?
Actually, yeah, thank you. I forgot to mention that one of the really wonderful aspects of our development plan is that all the rehab will be done with the tenants in place. And this is what occurred at Concord Apartments. And it's the same, we're using the same general contractor. They're very, very good at what they do. They're able to just sort of very effectively and efficiently move in and, you know, do what they need to do and then sort of get out of the way. It takes some coordination of the property manager.
And coordination, cooperation with the resident, which is a disruption in their home. But they're happy with the end result.
Yeah. I mean, it's, you know, obviously, it's a process. And the residents sort of, you know, acknowledge that and they know it. And we generally have a meeting with them before we start construction and explain, you know, sort of what's going to happen. But the beauty of it is, nobody has to be relocated. So that's a good thing.
Very good. So you're going to be doing this all at one time with all the residents? Or you're going to try and do it like in stages with each stages?
Yep. Kind of a rolling crew going through each of the all the property.
Like if you were going to have your kitchen done in your house, you know, you'd have your contractor and they're working. You could disrupt it for a day or two, but then your kitchen would be redone and then they go to the next house. They're going to work around everybody to get the best.
Yeah, the way the contractor likes to work is that he likes to, you know, sort of do all the kitchens in the community. And then he'll come back and he'll do the HVACs. And then he'll come back and he'll do the windows. So the beauty of that, it's not as if, you know, you're having everything done at one time. So it makes it more livable. Yeah.
Any other questions? Jeannie?
Let me read the findings of fact for each of the properties separately for the record. The Alton Planning Commission had a regular meeting on March 7, 2011, requesting Mr. Dwight Tony Esquire, representing Homes for Elkton LLC, to rezone the property located on the north side of Bridwell Parkway and east of Whitehall Road, tax map 320, parcel 2367, from R2 suburban residential to R3 urban residential. The Alton Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning for this property to R3 based on the following finding of fact. Population change: There's been an increase in population in this immediate area since the last comprehensive rezoning in 1994, with the development of about 126 in an Elk Chase apartment complex located as a permanent of Bridwell Parkway. Availability of public facilities: Public facilities, including water and sewer, currently serve the site. Present and future transportation patterns: This property is located on the north side of Bridwell Parkway, a local town road, and east of Whitehall Road, a county-maintained arterial road. There are no known plans to change this transportation pattern. Compatibility with existing and proposed development for the area: The adjacent property to the north is under R2 suburban residential and is currently undeveloped. The adjacent property directly to the east is under R2, which is the location of the Foxridge Manor apartment complex. Properties to the south across Bridwell Parkway are under R2 and are equipped with duplex homes. The properties to the west across Whitehall Road are in the city of County D.R. Development Residential and include single-family detached homes. The applicant did not define what constitutes the neighborhood. Existing development in the immediate area consists of undeveloped land, highway commercial, educational, religious, and mixed residential uses. The existing and proposed zoning is compatible with existing and proposed development in the area. The relationship of such proposed amendment to the Town of Elkton Comprehensive Plan: The R2 district is described in Elkton's Comprehensive Plan as follows: Suburban residential is Elkton's medium-density residential land-use district. Density ranges from 3 to a maximum of five dwelling units per acre. Most of the dwelling units are single-family detached, although the lot sizes and yards are smaller than in the Town and State District. The R3 district, according to Elkton's Comprehensive Plan, is described as follows: The urban residential district includes the higher-density areas of Elkton. Through this district, the town seeks to provide areas within the town that are appropriate for development at urban densities and that support a full range of housing types, including single-family detached units, townhouses, apartments, condominiums. The town also seeks to encourage, through the urban residential district, the development of new residential areas that complement the neighborhoods and have unified design elements and appearance. Suitability of the property in question to use is permitted under the existing and proposed zoning classifications. The property in question is suitable for use as permitted under existing and proposed zoning classifications. Recommendation for approval or denial of the proposed amendment by the Alton Planning Commission: The Alton Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed rezoning from R2 to R3. Substantial change in the character of the neighborhood: There are no findings of substantial change in the character of the neighborhood. Mistake in the existing zoning classification. The burden of proof required by the applicant seeking a zoning reclassification is to demonstrate substantial change in the character of the neighborhood since the last comprehensive rezoning or mistake in the original zoning or comprehensive rezoning. The property in question is under suburban residential R2. The applicant is requesting R3 urban residential zoning classification. The applicant states that there was a mistake in the original zoning classifications of property. The applicant states the property was under R2 in the recent, most recent zoning ordinance approved by the town despite the fact that substantially all of the property was already improved with apartments that are permitted use in the R3 zone but not in the R2 zone. The applicant provided evidence of mistake in the original zoning of the subject property. The property in question was under R2 prior to the 1994 Comprehensive Plan and existing zoning ordinance. The previous zoning ordinance permitted apartments in the R2 zone by special exception. The current ordinance says not. Apartments are currently permitted in the R3 zone. The Alton Planning Commission found that during the previous comprehensive rezoning, they failed to consider that parcel 2367 was developed as apartments and they failed to rezone the property consistent with that use. The Alton Planning Commission found evidence of mistake and unanimously recommended approval of this rezoning request. The findings of fact for the Foxridge Manor property are essentially the same. The Planning Commission heard the request of Mr. Dwight Tony, representing Whitehall and U-Limited Partnership, to rezone the property located on the north side of Bridwell Parkway, tax map 320, parcel 2368, from R2 to R3. The population change, availability of public facilities, and present and future transportation patterns, compatibility with existing and proposed development in the area, relationship to the Comprehensive Plan, and suitability of the property in question are identical. I'll save my three readings. The Alton Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed zoning for the Foxridge Manor apartments parcel marked with R3. For the same reason, they found evidence of mistake and unanimously recommended approval of the zoning request for the Foxridge Manor apartments also.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this rezoning?
Deborah Stork, they can have you in Elkton. Since Mr. Tony brought up the subject of the new medical offices in the old Walmart building, is there any plan to correct the discrepancies in the sidewalk on Whitehall Road? There's two places between the school and Bridwell Parkway and between Bridwell Parkway and the entrance to Walmart, where there's no sidewalk. And it's, the people are forced to go on the road.
We don't have any plans with regard to this particular application because we're really not changing anything that's already there. But I can tell you, that's a county road. And I, as a county, we have to work something out of that. Whitehall Road is a county road.
I'm here. The commissioners, it's been brought before the commissioners.
Anyone else?
Actually, I'm here on another matter. I'm here to scott, but I've been in communication with the county, the town, and the state highway. Because I didn't know that the county road, I wrote my letter to the state highway. My father is a resident of Abbey Manor. Sidewalk on Whitehall Road, I don't know if this directly affects yours, but this aspect does. There's patients or residents of this complex that have the little scooters. And they are forced, as they be said, to ride in the middle of the road. I have five pictures of that snowstorm. And people are riding in the middle of the road. You can see on the back of this sketch here that there's no, coming out of Bridwell Parkway to the left, there doesn't appear to be any sidewalk. And then there's the sidewalk from the school. And then from the school to the senior civic, or the...
Person.
Rehab center. There is no sidewalk. And then it picks up again at Abbey Manor. Then it stops with a big mud puddle before you get out to 213. So I don't know if these people, but it's certainly to be addressed. And the town does, I sent it to the department. And the town does, I sent it to the department, but it works. We do have home pictures that I sent, Google or picture from the intersection, clearly shows sidewalk stop. That's my input.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, and this public hearing for this project is hereby now closed. Okay, what's board's wishes? Motion to accept the rezoning?
I'm, I'm so moved.
Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now Dwight, we have another public hearing requested by Dwight Tony again, representing Whitehall. Second, Limited Partnership?
Which one did you do?
Oh, which one, which one did you do? How about the House for America?
Yeah.
You're only putting together, okay. All right, all right, then we're going to the resolution, R2, 2011 with Singley.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You're all right.
Good evening. I'm here with Mr. Hicks, who's the president of Singley Fire Company. The fire company is in the process, as you know, of, because you've been through a number of public hearings dealing with that, that we all recall, but we're basically, they're in the process of expanding their buildings out there. As a part of that, they are obtaining some financing through the Columbia Bank here in town. The Columbia Bank offered to do that financing in something called a TEFRA financing. At one time, I could even tell you what TEFRA stands for, and it wouldn't mean anything to you anyway, but it is a federal act that was passed in the 1980s. Part of that act actually allows for tax-free interest being, being able to be provided and paid by the borrower to the bank if they go through TEFRA financing. There are some hoops that we have to jump through. A couple of those hoops are that the, that the fire company has to be a designated fire company of the town. There was an agreement that was prepared by the bank's bond council that the fire company has already executed, that we are presenting to you this evening to hope that you will execute. The fire company has, as you know, provided all of the fire protection coverage for the town since time immemorial, since long before any of us were around, and continues to do so. This agreement just memorializes that, and there is a resolution then that you would also need to pass whereby you would recommend the approval of this financing. The financing does not obligate the town for anything. The town, this is not one of, a type of bond where the town has to borrow the money and then reloan it or whatever. This is a direct loan between the Columbia Bank and the Singley Fire Company, but you do, in order for this to happen, by federal law, we do have to have you approve of that financing through a resolution, which has been presented to you this evening also. I don't, if you have any other questions, let me know. I try to keep it short and sweet, but...
Anybody have any questions? Okay, it's a pretty long resolution, but it's basically just what you said. So, can I get a motion to accept resolution R2-2011? William M. Singley?
I will make motion to accept resolution R2-2011.
Second. Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With that being said, would you like to fund us?
(laughter)
Okay, now we have a public hearing on ordinance 1-2011 rental housing ordinance. And to make this thing go a little bit smoother, I'm asking that everyone will have three minutes to come up and make your comments. We appreciate everything you're going to tell us tonight. I'll let you know, there's no voting taken tonight. We just want to hear from you and what your concerns are. You just make your comments. This is not a debate. You have your three minutes, make your comments, and we'll take this all in, and we'll go from there. Again, there's no vote being taken tonight. We just want to hear your comments. All right? So, this public hearing is now open, and what I'm going to do, I know everybody signed in, but I think it makes it easier this way if we just go row by row by row by row, and I'll call first row over here on my right, and break down the rows, come back over here, and then we'll get anybody in the back. That way, everybody has an opportunity, and I don't miss anybody, and they all have an opportunity to speak. I see there's nobody in the front row, so, second row. Just come up and state your name and everything, and your address. And Louis will time you, and he will let you know when your time's up.
Well, I anticipate I wasn't going to be able to say everything I wanted to say, so I'm prepared.
Thank you.
Hope I did this right. Should end up with five pages.
Name, address. Yeah, tell them name and address.
Number one, my name is Hampton Scott. My name is Hampton Scott, and I live at 140 Frenchtown Road in Elkton. And I, number one, I want to thank you for letting me come here and speak before you. I can't say all I have to say in three minutes, I can't get to it. But, Joe, I hate to start this off with knocking on you, but this is, to give you an example of why I'm so frustrated, and this is not even part of my presentation, this might take three minutes. So, I went to see Joe today, and I joke, and I belong to fire company, friends with me, every time he's run for election, I had a sign on my property. And I said, "Joe, I'm against this." And he says, "Well, let me tell you why I'm for it." And he says, "My wife got bit by a dog." And he said, "Then I got bit by a dog." And if this ordinance was in effect, then that landlord would have to kick the tenant out. No, is that correct or not?
We have forces to deal with them that way.
But with the new ordinance, we would have a way to do it. Apparently, now, nothing can be done to kick that tenant out. I just wanted to make, I mean, that's, that's your viewpoint, and, you know, you're entitled to your viewpoint, but I think that's wrong. Why is it the landlord's fault that some tenant's dog bit you? So, I'm, you told me we can't ask any questions, but that's my concern. Now, the new property rental standards comprise of... Can you hear me with that, Doug? Because I got to stand up. The Elkton zoning ordinance. Now, I couldn't get a copy of the 2009 International Maintenance Code. But I do have a copy of the 2009 International Residential Code. I do have a copy of the 2009 Building Code. Now, I think that's asking a lot to have the landlords abide by that. And throughout this document, you say, the resolution says, the ordinance says, that if there's any violation of any of these codes, the way I read it, maybe I'm wrong, Council might correct me, that we're in violation. And I think that's wrong. I think that's excessive for what's wrong. You're having a problem with out-of-town landlords, is what started us all, I understand. Well, that's okay. Let's make the out-of-town landlords get a resident agent. That's not too much. I'm sure all the landlords here will get along with that. I think probably all landlords here live here, basically. I, I, how close am I to Louis?
You got 15 seconds.
15 seconds. It's just, you know, what I like to say, I'm glad I wrote this out. It tells you the way I feel about it. I hope each and every one of you take the time to read it, because it expresses even emotionally some of my concerns, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Give her a minute to get herself out.
I'm a property owner in the Elkton Heights. I own property, lived in the Heights for 10 years, starting in 1982. Been a landlord since 1982 there. Just want to say, I oppose the law that you're putting, thinking of putting on the books. I think you're overstepping your boundaries. The mayor, up here, Mayor Kraus, I rented to his mother for 20 years. I love the Heights. I take a lot of pride in my ownership in the Heights. When it comes time to clean up leaves in the fall, to clean up neighbors' leaves, I think I've been an asset to the community. I just feel that you're having problems with other people, not us. I've owned property there, as I say, for 30 years, you've never had a problem with me. Go after the people that you have a problem with. Thank you.
Thank you.
We still got two minutes.
Anyone else in the second row? Third row? Over here. No, we're going, no, we're going straight back, and I'll come back that way.
I'm Mrs. McKenny. I'm out in Maryland, 70 years old, and my people, nobody, Barry, I rented from him. Number one, I don't agree that you as a mayor, or nobody else, who was either, has any say-so about somebody getting bit, jumping the fence, and biting you. I live, I go out and visit my custody every day in Hawnburg Town. 153, 154, Mr. Rick Smoody, he's worked for Town. It's nothing but trash. Do any of these go out there and knock fifteen golds down that one house? It could bite any of them children walking home from school. Does anybody on this board care? No, because I've mentioned it before. So, there's no reason us talking about somebody getting bit, because nobody cares.
All right, next row. Everyone.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Yodavauer, and I'll probably be short. I don't agree with anything that's in this, but I want to bring up one thing in it that is troublesome to me, and then kind of just touch on another thing that I find is an overall type of issue here in the town. My biggest problem with this is, is some, has been mentioned on a little bit, I, it is, it seems to me in here that I'm being asked to be responsible for the actions of my tenants. And I don't understand how it is that I have any type of enforcement capability. I'm looking at the list on here, disturbing the peace. All right? I'm going to give you a perfect example. I had a bad tenant out on Danforth Drive. I went through the legal channels to get rid of that tenant, and I'll tell you why. Because the town sent me a letter, because that tenant continually stopped cutting his grass. I said, "I've had enough of this. I take pride in my properties." I went through the legal channels to get rid of him. Now, I have a really good tenant in there, and I got a call from her two nights ago at nine o'clock at night, and I answered the phone, and she says, "I've really got a problem here." And I said, "What's your problem?" She goes, "The tenant that was in here before me keeps coming here and knocking on the door, beating on the door at all hours of the night, demanding that I give them their mail. I don't have their mail. I don't know where their mail is. I've told them that. I've told them repeatedly. It's been four or five times in the past week that they've been doing it. What do you think I should do?" Well, I said, "The only thing I can tell you to do is you need to call the police and have them handle it." But under this, if they come out there three times, I've got to go out to her house, and I've got to evict her, a good tenant. It's the way that I read it. I see you shaking your head, "No." What if they get into a scuffle out there? What if they get into a scuffle and she loses her patience and she gets convicted of disturbing the peace? I can't control these things. I can control it to the best of my ability. If I know I have a problem, I take care of it. I think to get to the end of this thing, what should be done, if this is where we're trying to go, I think that every resident owner in this town, every person who owns a house and lives in that house, should have to register, and if you don't like the way that they're conducting their lifestyle, you ask them to leave, because that's what you're asking me to do. And the other thing that I want to bring up here is something that's really upsetting to me. I'm a young guy. I own quite a few properties in town. I've been told that I'm very fortunate because I'm property-rich. I was just told that by a county employee as I was paying my property taxes the other day. I'm really upset, because here's how I look at my relationship. I was in Mr. Wilson's office the other day telling him the same thing. I plan to be here for the rest of my life. I contribute to the community. I'm continually stepping over top of homeless people in front of my commercial properties out on Route 40. I'm continuously chasing away from defecating on my property, urinating on my property, vandalizing my property. And here, I have to be responsible, I need somebody to be responsible for the 200 people that are living in the tent across the street from my warehouse. That's what I need. But what I really need from the town is, is my relationship with this town, and this, I look at it in very simplistic ways. I feel like I am a customer for the town. I pay the town, pay the town a lot of money. I don't feel like a customer, because I don't feel like I'm getting anything in return. And by you going through and making me do this, you are charging me to be your customer. That's the way I feel it. If people walk into my furniture store and I go, "Mr. Mayor, I'll tell you what, and you've been a customer of mine, and I appreciate your business," but if I came to you and said, "I need $25 from you first," I don't think you're going to buy anything from me, and I don't think you're going to give me $25 either. So, I thank you very much for your time, and I'm glad that you let me, let my feelings down on this. Thank you.
We gave you some extra time from the other... That's right. I didn't want Mr. Scott to get it.
I've been coming to the workshops, and it kept being mentioned that the town claims that the current code lacks teeth. I don't know what more teeth the town needs when it can post a unit "Not Fit For Human Occupancy" sticker on the front door, demanding that the occupants vacate in 30 days for any violation that they see unsafe prior to any notification of the property owner. That can be for the water being shut off, roaches, mice, et cetera. And as a landlord, this can even hinder our job. I had a tenant who I knew was not a good tenant, and she was damaging my house. I was trying to go through the court system to do it correctly. I already had three judgments against her for non-payment of rent, and after that happens three times, on the fourth time, you can file for no right of redemption, tenant would have to move. On the Friday before that court case, I was at her house. We were surveying the damages that she had caused to the house. She had no complaints, and after we left, she called Mr. Smith and asked him to come out and inspect her house. Instead of me being notified in any way, no letter, no time to fix anything, he posted the house with a "Not Fit For Human Occupancy" sticker, for things that she had really damaged. She'd kicked in the front door. It was damaged, the slider, they apparently broke in it and put in two different pieces of glass that didn't fit properly, and some other repairs. I don't feel that that is the town working with me, the customer, and even letting me know that there are any damages, and nor did the town ask the tenant if she was in any dispute, or if she had even notified me of any damages. That just gave her ammunition to take to the court system to try to be able to stay in the house. As a landlord, I want the best tenant I can find. I obviously don't want to rent to someone who tears up the house, doesn't pay the rent, or engages any legal activity. However, as a landlord, the tenant base here has deteriorated drastically over the years as the town has deteriorated. We can only get the best person willing to live in the area. The homelessness and blight as a whole in the town have been hurtful to everyone. Landlords and business owners have a vested interest in the town, and we want to see Elkton return to the town it used to be for the better of all. Why not let the community work with the town to help light? The rental code is just another example of the town isolating itself and not being business-friendly. We've offered to work with the town on numerous occasions to no avail. There's a lot of experience in this room, and I believe you can accomplish a lot more by building bridges instead of walls. I think the current code you have works for all property owners, and that's sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner of the town.
Good morning. My name is James Herman, a property owner, rental property owner in the town of Elton. I live just across the street from the town limits now. I'd be happy to come back in if you'd give me some water at my house, if you wanted to extend it. But anyway, just a few comments about this ordinance. I don't agree with another layer of bureaucracy, come in to impose on, not that I have such a busy schedule, but I know all these other people do. And it's something that takes time out of my schedule, your schedule, to register, inspect these properties, which I'd ask you to consider, because you've got quite a bit of expense. There are literally thousands of rental units in this town, and you are expected to provide inspection of every particular unit. You're going to have to send out all these registration requirements and receive a fee of fifteen dollars, which is going to be an expenditure of tax dollars, which I think could be better used someplace else. So that's one reason I'm against this particular piece of ordinance. As far as the violation of this concern, and I'll give you a good example, as everybody else has done, there's not a landlord here that wants a bad tenant. We look for, we try to screen to get the best people possible. It's a nuisance to put people out, because the ones you have to put out usually wind up ill, and your money is sometimes a lot of money. And unlikely, a lot of people think there's a lot of money being made. There is money in the landlord business, but each year, my residential taxes went down, but all business property, residential rental properties, taxes have been increased. Insurance increased, taxes increased, maintenance of the properties have increased. So the margin of profit keeps getting slimmer every year. I see that in mind, I keep pretty good records on that. As far as putting a tenant out, and you can, I'm sure everybody here has the same experience, get a bad tenant, I've had a man came in very recently, been here a short time, and I guess it's a violation of this statute. He's not maintaining a prostitute, but he has one coming in. And I'm sure it's a violation of this ordinance. I don't want him, I don't want the nuisance of having people on my property, because not only does the prostitute come, but the pimp comes. So he received notice that he's got to vacate and find another place, so, and I think everybody in here, because people that don't take care of your property, that's big expense to us also. And lastly, I like to mention that already in effect, that Commissioner Hicks kept stating about half a dozen times, that it was necessary to adopt this ordinance in order to implement the existing laws in effect at the state level and/or any town ordinances you have. You have a lot of landlord tenant laws in effect by the state of Maryland that can be used in the tenant. You have the health department regulations and statutes that also can be effective against properties that are not up to standards. I don't know what this thing does, and why Mr. Hicks comments say this was necessary in order to enforce the laws that are already in effect. I think he made that comment a half a dozen times, and they quoted you in the papers saying that. I don't get the connection between this and what's already in place. So for those reasons, I'm opposed to it, and I would hope you would not pass this and cause another burden on taxpayers that recontribute quite a bit of money to the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Alan McCarthy, I'm not a resident of the town, I do own properties in Elton. I served as a veterinarian for many, many years, and I am part of this. There is no money in real estate business, I can tell you right now. So you need to treat the renters and the tenants pretty decently. That's my opening statement. According to your proposed thing, we have its zero five two eight one hundred, these criminal activities are now being my responsibility. Mr. Herman referred to prostitutes in the house. How would I even know? You have disturbing the peace, my problem, disorderly conduct, my problem, crimes of violence, but not limited assault, battering, murder, manslaughter, robbery, attempt to commit such acts, unuseful use, possession, distributive control, substances, these are things that no responsible landlord would ever know were taking place, and even when they do take place, and you suspect it, the police officers many times are reluctant to do anything. I am totally against this entire ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other comment, I would even, has anyone done a proposal of what is the cause to implement these procedures will be to the town of Elton? That's something that should very seriously be considered.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Scott Williams, I live at one sixty-five Forest Stone Drive. Like the rest of the landlords here, I disagree with this draft completely. It's requiring, as others have already stated, me to try and attempt to control the behavior of my tenants. Now, every landlord here has good tenants, we have bad tenants. When we have to evict, we have to go through the court system to do it. Some of the provisions in here don't match up with what I can legally do. It says thirty days, but in every case, it takes much longer than that. And most of the, everything in here, I'm not even sure the police can do. Okay? If a policeman wants to enter a property, he has to have some sort of cause, even a search warrant. But according to this unelected control officer, inspection officer, he can enter at any time. Okay, that's, that's almost nonsensical. Okay? It doesn't work like that. Okay? And, you know, the good intention here is nice. I mean, I understand the intention, but you're going about it all wrong. If you're trying, you know, as a landlord, as I said, I can't control, I can evict them, okay? If the town sends me a letter and says, hey, look, we've had complaints about this going on, absolutely, I speak to my tenant about it. Okay? And then I have to follow a process of eviction. Okay? And that's, and all of that is in our leases, it's all in these contracts, and now, you know, where does it go from here if this is passed? As others have said, you know, if, under your own, some of the, and I don't know what the fees are, but you know, where's, I don't know where that ends. And then, just homeowners in town, where does it end there? If they're all weeded out from rental properties and they go to other home, who's to say, you know, who's there, who's not there? I would say, I totally disagree with this, and, you know, I'm sorry you got bit, Mayor, so I really am.
I didn't get bit, you got the story wrong.
But here again, I mean, if, this sounds more like this is a police matter, not a landlord matter. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next row? Fifth row? Anybody else in this row? Last row?
My name's Bill McCall. I've been a landlord in Elton for about fifty-five years. First off, I have a question, if you don't mind, and that question is, is there an ordinance in the town against loitering? There is not?
In other words, you have to have a criminal behavior, it can be just hand-wooder, and you can stand around simply, it's not against the law.
Are you the mayor?
No.
I don't think there's, there's none.
There is none.
Well, then, I would say that, taking first things first, it would certainly seem to me that that is the town's largest problem, is the loitering. It's all over town, and I'm not just talking at night, I'm talking about during the day. Women will not go to the acme because of the loitering, et cetera, and I know that's a whole different subject. My question is, why are homeless shelters not included in your areas that are exempt? Homeless shelters are not exempt? Is that correct? So that homeless shelters would be subject to the same ordinance that the rest of us would be? Is that correct? Somebody wrote this law.
If it's real law.